So, I am calling the school committee meeting numbers 1,676 on Monday, November 25th at 7:00, I don't even know, 11:00 PM. Okay. All right, so, we get to start with our reorganization. So, we need to do the election of the chair. So, I am calling for a motion to open nomination for members to serve as chair to the school committee.
Second.
Who are you nominating? Okay, oh, that's it. You're doing great. You're doing great. You're doing a great job.
Good job.
We're following your rules.
I know, and it's not, it's not ready yet.
We are not nominating you.
Thank God, thank God. I have enough things going on. Okay. All right, so, roll call vote. So, Carl. I'll take a roll call vote on all of them. To open it, I have to.
Oh, oh, right.
So, it's roll call rolls. Okay. Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, now I need nominations for the position of chair. Kim?
Can I come on and nominate her?
Okay.
Do we need seconds on those nominations?
I believe you do.
A second.
Stephanie, Stephanie, okay. Are you writing this down? Thank God, okay. Are there any other nominations?
Uh, can I, do you not want to be chair?
I didn't know I would like to be chair.
You do want to be. All right, well.
She never said otherwise.
Oh, okay, I, I thought.
No, it's okay.
Because no one said anything. So, I nominate Bonnie Summers.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other one, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. I will close the nominations for the position of chair. So, what we have done previously is allowed the people who have been nominated for chair to say why they would like to be chair. If everybody would like to hear that. Would you like to continue that practice? Okay, so, we'll start with Art first as being nominated.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to be chair because I've been on the school committee for a long time. I'm interested in being chair. My job has changed, so now I have time to be chairman of the school committee, which I never really had before. So, I think it's a good opportunity, and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Bonnie?
Well, I, obviously, I'm being chair. Carl, I keep the nomination. Kyle, the second. I think we're at a very critical point as a school district, and I think the experience I've had with a lot of the political issues that we've faced over the past years, particularly as we dealt with the issue of the merger, have always prepared me. We're entering into a very serious period in terms of negotiations, and I believe my experience there, both here and elsewhere, puts me in a good position for that. My commitment to the district, I think, has been very clear, and additionally, my whole career has been in education, both locally, nationally, and internationally. So, I would like to continue.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Madam Chairman. It's not very clever.
We'll take it, we'll take it.
Not very clever. Is it appropriate for other members of the school committee to ask questions or to make a comment? Ask a question of the candidates or make a comment?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. What we have done in the past is we've let people say why.
I think we have allowed for questions.
I think it would be fine. I don't think anybody would need it.
Well, because there was a motion, presumably, there's discussion after the motion is made regarding.
This is kind of discussion, right? We're letting them have.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's fine. I think it's fine. I'm gonna rule it. I'm gonna say it's okay.
Okay, then, I.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I have a question.
So, I'm gonna take this and do this. I'll write it in my head, yeah.
Okay. I hope you don't take this as combative, or, but you said, because it's definitely not, but what, you said your job has changed, meaning you have more time to devote to being the chair.
I am retired.
Oh, that's a change, yes. I agree. So, you're retired. Well, congratulations on retiring. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say or ask before we close? Okay, then, I'm gonna go ahead and close. Oh, sorry. Oh, you may.
How long have you been on school committee? I just don't know.
Sixteen years?
All of sixteen years.
Really? It's that long?
How long have you been on?
I'm gonna say Bonnie, yours is a long, ten year too.
Nine.
This one.
No, I was never on.
I did know, so.
I think it's nine or ten.
So, this is your third or second?
I had a two-year because that's when everything changed. Then, I had.
Two four-years.
Two four-years.
So, you're in the middle of the second four-year?
Four-year, yeah. So, yeah.
So, I've gone through the change period, which was interesting, as well as our current iteration.
How many terms was sixteen?
Well, I've been, I've been appointed by the selectmen. I've been voted on only by Sheffield residents. Now, I've been voted on by all five towns.
Okay, then.
And I've been vice chair for quite a few of them.
And we don't have any questions from the field, right? Nancy's good? Okay. All right, so, if everybody's good with questions or comments, I'm going to close the nominations, and then I will roll call. If you could just say who that you're voting for when I call your name. Carl, you're up first.
Really? Well, I can't avoid an editorial comment. I'm really torn, but I, I'm gonna vote for Bonnie.
Okay. And Jim?
I'll vote for Art.
Kyle?
Oh, man. I'm watching this.
Gotta eat your Wheaties.
I don't know, I'll vote for Bonnie.
Okay. Kim?
I'm gonna go with Art.
Nancy?
Art.
I didn't hear that.
Art. Miguel?
I like you both very much, but I'm gonna vote for Bonnie just 'cause that's what I know.
Art?
I'll vote for myself.
Julie?
This is a difficult position to begin.
Yes.
Yes.
But I'm gonna vote for Art.
Okay. Bonnie?
I'll vote for Bonnie.
Stephanie?
Art.
Okay. So, Mr. Batecki, you are our chair, and I am so happy to hand this over. So, I'm going this way. Oh, and send this to, here's your rules of order.
Thank you, everyone.
Dumb question, what's the timer for? We've never used it. Technically, remember.
Public comment.
We're looking at three.
Three minutes, right.
We've just never used it.
We rarely have public comments.
We rarely have public comments, as Kim says.
I don't know these things.
Now, everybody who's afraid to ask that question knows answers.
I'm happy to ask the dumb questions.
Yeah. Anyone that's dumb is going to don't ask.
Correct. When you want to. If you phrase it correctly, none of them look dumb.
Okay, we'll open up nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Bonnie Summers.
No, thank you.
Was that, you don't want it? Okay.
But thank you.
I'll nominate Kim, if that's okay. Or do I have to abstain until?
A second.
Who was nominated?
Kim.
Kim was nominated, and Stephanie's second.
Oh, okay.
Any others?
So, the sole nomination is Kim?
It appears that way.
Was it Kim or Jim? No.
Jim? Was it Jim? What is it?
Did we say Kim? That's why I was saying Kim.
It's only one letter away. It's easy to mistake.
We could know vice chair. Yeah, let's go vice chair.
Closed nominations. Roll call vote. Carl?
Well, yeah, oh, yes. Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a motion to declare Kim the vice chair by acclamation?
Second.
Third. Oh, favorite.
You're an honor favor.
We have to take it forward in the motion.
Yes.
From the motion.
Yep. Carl?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, maybe I'll go on our, Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. See names.
Since you have all that covered.
All I've seen the vice chair do is look good next to the chair. I can do that. Do you wanna switch spots? Huh? Do you wanna switch spots?
Why is this redundant?
Because to move to close, and you guys sit both at the same time. So, now you have one in. The motion's okay, this later position to the school district.
Yep. Um, motions to accept the nominations for secretary of the school committee, which is Dr. Beth Regbido. Can we nominate, do them all, or do we have to vote on the individual?
You can do them all, you can do them as a slate.
Treasurer, Kemi Lim.
Limicah.
Cada. District attorney, district law firm, Murphy, Lemire, and Murphy PC. Clerk to the school committee, Michelle Castellano. MD for the school district, Lisa Sol.
I move that the five names or entities mentioned be appointed.
I second.
Okay, roll call vote. Carl?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Kimberly? You're nodding yes.
I said yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I don't think I said it loud enough. Yes? She didn't hear you.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Art? Yes. See no public comment?
There can't be public comment.
Oh, Nancy?
No, that's not a hand, that's my.
In fairness, it looks like a hand.
Yeah, if you keep it off the, there you go. No public comment here.
No public comment. Chairman's report.
How do you?
Thank you, everyone, for nominating me. I helped to do the school committee proud, and I did go to the MASC, yeah, M.A.S.C. conference. It was a quick learning experience. Yep, it was a good time, and only for the last day, we froze to death.
Yeah, I missed that one.
Yeah, it was warm the first two days, and the third day, I think they turned the heat off because they only had rooms upstairs, and it wasn't, everybody had their jackets on.
Oh, boy.
So, but. All set, thank you.
Okay. Are you ready for me?
Yep.
Okay.
Chairman's report.
So, a lot has happened. I was actually looking back since the last time we met. We haven't met since October 24th, so, a lot has happened. Probably most notable that I just want to acknowledge, and I will follow up when there's more details, but obviously, the Simon's Rock partnership that we have for early college, and I just want to reassure everybody that nothing has changed. Our relationship is fine the way it is. Nothing is happening with the Simon's Rock move until the fall of 2025. There'll be much more. We have to have meetings with Department of Higher Ed, as well as the regular Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about our early college. But Simon's Rock also does have a micro, I forget how we said it, a micro campus in Hoyok. So, we have presence in Massachusetts anyway that would enable us to continue the partnership, and also, they still have the ability to certify credits, so, nothing changes at this point. But when there's more details and more to share about it as it moves on, we will continue to talk about it and do a larger presentation on what that might look like for us.
I have a question about that specifically.
Mm-hmm.
Is, I assume, although maybe not a correct assumption, that a collaboration of some sort with BCC is also under consideration?
We already have a collaboration with BCC. It's just not, it's not how we wrote the specific designated early college program. So, that has to be a different process.
But they could, is there any reason why there couldn't be a college credit program with BCC?
We have a, we have a college credit program. It's just not this same partnership with the way we wrote this grant.
Okay.
So, we have to go through the process through the state. It could end up being BCC, it could end up being other partners across.
Uh-huh, okay.
So, I'm not saying no to any of it. We have to find out what this means, and it's too early for me to say that, other than the fact that nothing's changing for our students, all the credits are honored, they will continue to be honored, and they can still be issued under Bar College. I want to reassure that, and faculty and staff. But we do, we do already have a relationship with BCC. We have a relationship with other places, so, MCLA, for instance. So, we can have different, but this specific partnership based on the designation from the state was specifically written with Bar College at Simon's Rock.
That's.
Since it's Republican, have you heard from families, families at all?
No, nothing. I think it's far too early for anybody to really have a solid, you know, there's still much to be discussed, so, but I, because I, there's really no change to the program the way it is, and we're gonna continue business as usual until we hear differently, I don't see that anybody's gonna say anything. You know, they'll be interested in what's happening long term, obviously. Okay. But, so, since then, we've had a lot of, also, some really great opportunities in the district. We had the author visit and the day with the United States of Readers, who, we also had the honor of having Ann Goby, Director of Rural Affairs in Massachusetts, who was here for that event. So, that was a really great day with, with our elementary students celebrating their first author visit. I had the opportunity to present with Transcend in Savannah about our Burke Studio program and the partnership, and the presentation was called Leadership from the Heart: Transformative Practices for Putting Rural Learners First. So, that was a really great opportunity, and there were many people from across the nation who were really interested in the work that we were doing. So, that was, that was a great experience. We had the elementary playground ribbon cutting ceremony. So, you guys all remember, you approved the, from the playground improvement committee, our fourth and fifth graders, who have the updated program at the elementary playground, so they have more swings and a circular slide, which I still haven't been down yet, but I'm going to. So, they had a great ceremony, so that was very exciting. We attended the MASSMASC conference. I believe there were four of us who attended for that. There were tons of informative sessions on everything from negotiations to policy, to budgeting, to leadership. So, that was a great opportunity, I think, for all of us to work together. If people can do that next November and plan ahead to attend, I think you'll find it valuable. We had, we hosted on November 13th, the Voices for Rural Education showcase, where the Commissioner of Education, the school committee legislators, community partners, and town officials joined us for a very exciting day. I think it really was a great opportunity to showcase all of the really innovative programs, and I think people who haven't had a chance to be in the schools in a long time had that, had that chance. So, it was really well received, and I just got back from, I have to write down there so long, the Learned Centered Leadership Conference that Transcend has for superintendents across the nation, anybody who has partnered with them. I had the opportunity, they asked to highlight our district and the work that we've done with them. So, I started our presentation with the video that the kids did for the visit that was done by the students when the commissioner was there, and throughout my firestarter, which was all of 10 minutes long, they burst into applause three times. They were so moved by the kids' video that they had done, and they just couldn't get over the work. But, and I said, well, I saw it at the same time as the commissioner, and they could not get over the fact that I had full trust of our faculty and staff and students, and that they were just ready to go, and, and everybody put it in such highlights. So, it, you know, it was really an amazing experience, another opportunity to be incredibly proud of the work that we're doing here. They were blown away by where the kids were already in this process. But, I really think that what this is showing is that we've had the opportunity to really get this district on the map, and people are really listening to our needs, what we can do as a small rural school district, how we can be innovative, and how we need to be supported appropriately financially to continue doing this work for our kids. So, I think that, that's a really important thing that we wanna highlight. And I think I'll stop there for tonight. Did I forget anything? There were a lot of things. Did I forget anything?
I didn't talk about the commissioner, man.
I did.
So, Julie, I don't see your name on here tonight. You had nothing for us?
I think we were trying to condense the meeting because it's more about new structure.
All right. New business, reorganization of subcommittees.
I have a question, Art.
Yep.
Does reorganization of subcommittees mean that we either reappoint current members and add new members, delete members? What is, what does the reorganization mean?
Well, everybody will have the opportunity to be on the committees. Do we know who was on last committees?
I don't.
What I got is blank, but.
I know. It's a guessing game. We're gonna get points. Michelle, right tell us.
So, if you want me to read through it?
I'm one.
I think most of us know what we were on.
We were on.
Can we just say we still like to continue, or do we?
I feel like they knew. I don't know who's on what and what the balance is, like, how many people are needed for which job.
And Miguel will be.
Oh, the upper.
Same position.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a thought before we go into this. Could we, or do we have to vote on this? Change and put on Building, Grounds, and Technology with Finance? Would that make sense, or?
To combine those two?
Yes.
You can't do one without the other. Is the membership similar? Michelle, can you tell us who's on those two committees?
Yes, I can. So, Sarah Pollak was prior chair of the Finance Subcommittee, and then we had Art, Carl, and Kim. And on Buildings, Grounds, and Technology, we had Art as the chair, David, Kyle, Nancy, and Kim were on that committee.
So, there was some overlap. Yeah. You were. I was on one.
Michelle, did you mention my name as being on Finance? Because I shouldn't be.
Yeah, I have you here on Finance.
Don't you recall?
He was removed.
He was removed.
Because he picked up another.
Well, wait a second. I wasn't. Removed might not be the right word.
He picked up a lot.
I wasn't kicked off.
No doubt.
I.
The compromise by him going to policy and taking on all the work in policy was that he was not also burdened with finance.
Okay.
So, that leaves how many years on Finance?
Yeah. It's only three.
Okay. Kim, do you have a question?
Nancy?
Nancy?
I have a lot of questions.
All right.
Art, I think, I wonder if maybe we should explain to people what the different committees, those of us who are chairs of different subcommittees, what the subcommittees do, so they know what we're doing.
The functions are on.
Okay.
So, what do people think?
I have a question, Art.
Yep.
Is there, did you move to combine those two committees, Buildings, Grounds, and Technology, and Finance?
He opened it up for a second.
I opened it up to get people's feedback and best, whether we could do that.
Oh, if you would like my feedback, I had suggested this previously. I think that Buildings and Grounds should be more of an ad hoc, and we usually have to have Finance Committee involved if there's monies anyway. So, I think, depending if you're, if, you know, you, you call that together as needed, it should still be an established committee, but underneath financing, you appoint it when you need to.
Kim?
I kinda agree with that, especially with the difficulties of people putting their time into these subcommittees, because I know we're stretched because we have a list of them, and certain amount of people, like you saw, there was overlap, and I'm on, I think, two other ones. So, there are four committees, and I don't know if everybody can give the same amount of time to every, you know, as that. And I think if we kind of downsize a couple of these so that they fall under, and then we take it out when needed, put it back in, I think we'd have fuller committees, because there'd be less meetings to go to, and people could invest more time in the more really important ones, like Finance. That's really important.
Yeah, I agree with Kim and the superintendent. I hope that makes sense. I think it may be asking those two committees to do an awful lot and overburden them. So, I agree with what Kim just said, and the superintendent will be able to say it also.
Art, can I have his question as a new person? So, is there a timeline for, like, the workload? Like, I mean, I understand Finance, you know, I know that, that cycle, but for some of these other ones, is it an ongoing, going constant workload? Are there, are there monthly meetings in between regular meetings? How does that work, the scheduling of these meetings?
So, the, all the subcommittees meet in between school committee meetings?
Yeah.
So, like, Finance meets during the budget cycle?
Yeah.
And usually, it doesn't meet, and that's why Building and Grounds only meets. And that's why Building and Grounds only meets three or four times. But Policy, once we get into the restructuring of our policy manual, that's going to be a heavy duty one, that's going to have to meet a lot. Community and public relations, that meets, depending on what's going on, that could be meeting a lot. Negotiations, obviously, is going to be meeting quite a bit. Evaluation of, superintendent evaluations are going to be probably.
Four or five times.
Yeah, four or five times. Then the other ones really.
Are as needed.
Yeah, are ad hocks don't meet very often.
So the ones that are on the flip side and not in bold letters are the ones that are a little more sporadic?
Right, are as needed ad hocks.
Like ours help ad hoc? I've never met any of these. So.
Oh, really? Like, so liaison to the Eagle Fund or the Child Care Program, is it, do they just go how frequently? One necessarily liaison to the Eagle Fund has changed, like what's been moved to? Yeah, they don't, they reorganize.
Right.
And I was going to say, we've got the Regional School District Planning Board, that's.
That's.
Right?
That's.
Yeah, so some of them are coming off.
Do we know which ones are coming off?
That one.
Can we?
That one.
Okay, so the Planning Board and Eagle Fund is coming off, and there's not. Yeah, they reorganized, and they don't.
They don't do it.
They don't do it. They don't ask for. They don't want a school, and they get to make that decision. Oh, isn't that interesting? Okay.
So which one is that, the liaison to Eagle Fund?
Eagle Fund, yeah.
Eagle Fund? What else? So the liaison. And the Community Health Advisory Board was during COVID, we had that, I don't.
No, yeah, that's. Oh, yeah, we have that, and just in case anything pops back up, we do that.
So you keep that one? Right. But you just need one person, I think you need a whole assignment.
So here's my question. It says ad hoc, regional agreement review. Now is that regional, what we just went through, or is that regional?
No.
Your regional agreement.
So is that something we can group in with Policy? Because.
It's a straight ad hoc.
It's a straight ad hoc.
Yeah.
That was my question. Okay.
And the warrant representative has to stay because that person comes in all the time to check over the warrants. Is there only one person that does that, or do you have a backup person? Um, the person calls somebody else if they can, but basically it's one person. And as long as the person who comes in as a sub knows what to do, just.
Really, childhood, did that even meet last year?
It's liaison, so if they need to.
The three bottom liaisons, I don't think any of them were ever done. I mean.
Oh, they were.
They have, both.
No, I meant this last year.
Not last year.
Not this last year, is what I was saying. I'm not saying in the past. This last year.
They were just.
Okay, well, that's a good overview.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at the policy. And I believe it says for the subcommittees that the committee chairperson, subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the subcommittee chairperson and its members. I'm just following what the current policy is. So I don't know if that's something that you want to follow, or do you want to try to do that here?
I would like to try to do that here. So if we need to vote to change it, then I'll take a motion to change it.
So I'm just following the policy here.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the chairs of the subcommittees this evening, and.
Then we'll leave it the way that it is?
Yeah, so I don't know if you need to, because it is the policy. The policy is that Art will appoint, subject to approval, you guys will approve it, but he would appoint who the subcommittee chairperson and its members are, so he could go down and list, you know, say, here's who they currently are, I'm appointing them, and then you guys say yes or no, if you're going to do it that way.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to go back, just, I don't think we closed the loop on the Finance Committee combining with Buildings and Grounds.
Right, you need to vote that, or motion and vote.
Motion and. We need to do that. Is there a, is there a motion?
I'm going to leave separate, that is, have two separate subcommittees, one for Finance and one for Buildings, Grounds, and Technology.
You have a motion? I second.
That's what we have now.
No, you don't want that. You want to put Buildings and Grounds up underneath Finance as an ad hoc, as needed. We're trying to combine. Yes.
That's what I saw, I thought I heard it the way you said it, but I was like.
Did he want to keep it the status quo?
I'll accept that amendment.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'm.
But that's an exact opposite.
You're not allowed to amend.
I'm not allowed to do anything if I'm.
Carl, which reason, one? Do you want them together or separate?
Well, I, I said it, I thought they should be separate, but I don't have any objection to Buildings, Grounds. Either one works as long as they're not a combined subcommittee, which was my objection. So someone else make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to take Buildings and Grounds, keep it as a subcommittee, and put, I mean, excuse me, Finance as a subcommittee, and then put Buildings and Grounds underneath Finance, but as an ad hoc.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Did you include technology in that as well?
And technology.
Second? Oh, you did.
Carl?
You'll go. Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
I?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Art, yes. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Go get them, I don't know how you want to.
I have a question. Is there any other ones that can be combined at this point, or do we think we're good with just that one?
I don't think that can combine any of the, we got rid of two.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds.
It would be a whole lot easier.
Ad hocks would need Finance.
This doesn't need to be a motion, I think, but can I make a suggestion that as we go down the list, this is a suggestion to you, Mr. Chair, that, for example, the next one is Community Relations, Public Schools Advocacy Subcommittee, that Michelle read the names of who she has who are current members, and then those current members, I mean, some of it may include a current member who's not a current member of the school committee. But if they are, and the suggestion is by MASC, that the committee, any subcommittee be though fewer than three people, and generally it's better to have, it should be an odd number, it's generally better to have five and three, because if there are only two on a subcommittee, or there are three, and one person can't attend a meeting, then you don't have, then it creates a problem. So that's my suggestion, that, so if we go to the next one, you read the members, and then we can act accordingly.
So are we starting back at Finance again, say, appointing a chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So don't confuse the blind, okay?
So currently, on the Finance Subcommittee, the chair was Sarah Pollak.
Yep.
Art was on the committee, and Kim was on the committee. On Buildings and Grounds and Technology.
There had to be more people than Finance. Just to, they can't hold all that number.
So only have two now? Yes?
Yes, and you don't have a chair?
We don't have a chair. So who is on Building and Grounds? I was on Building and Grounds.
Art, you were the chair. We had David, Kyle, Nancy, and Kim.
Well, I am interested in Finance. I'll stay on Finance, too.
Okay.
So I assume.
It's five.
What do you have?
Well, myself, Kim, Julie, David, Nancy.
David, David.
Take that.
It's not you.
Kim.
Julie, Nancy, Kyle.
Kyle.
Unless he doesn't want to say.
One of these, you want, because there's going to be big ones.
I'll go on to Finance. How do you want to do it?
I have to stay on Buildings and Grounds. Technology.
That's an ad hoc.
I have to be on the ad hoc.
But you won't be, you'll be on this big one.
How many are?
They're all made, these are all made.
But now, if this is created as.
Can I have one who's confused here?
Well, yes, Nancy. At the moment, we were talking about Finance Committee and Building and Grounds combining, so we've got Art, Kim, Nancy, Kyle, Julie's interested, and Bonnie's also interested. We've kind of just combined who was on both of those and, like, force fed them into one committee. And we're talking with Kyle about whether he wants to stay on the big group or exit stage left.
Move on to a different big one.
Big one? Policy big one?
Yeah.
Policy is going to be a big one. And personal negotiations is going to be another big one.
So, I mean, I can be on Policy or Finance, I think both would be tough, huh? Maybe?
But I, I don't, I don't want to be on Policy. So.
Or you want Policy?
No, and I don't want to be on Policy. All right, so.
So maybe.
Who's coming?
Who's staying?
Aren't you?
Aren't you Policy?
Yes.
By yourself?
No, why can't you?
I probably prefer to stay on Policy and not do Finance, but if I, if I were to pick it.
I think Bonnie would be an asset to Finance due to the fact that she's gone through budgets and stuff like that for 10 years, like, you know, it's probably more than I or Julie or anybody else, so I think she'd be an asset on Finance.
Okay, so it's.
Now, remember, MASC is going to be doing a lot of our work on Policy, and we're doing a whole policy manual.
But you still have to show up.
Oh, no.
So it's, it's a longer process than normal when you talk about Policy.
So who makes that on Finance and Buildings and Grounds now? So that'd be me, you, Art.
So you could choose. Out of this group, though, you can just say, I need an ad hoc group to be.
Because I'm also on Buildings and Grounds.
So Nancy.
Nancy, did you want to go on? Are you interested in being on the Finance? With Buildings and Grounds?
Um, yeah, I, um, I, yeah.
That'll give us five, that's a really good number, because if somebody doesn't show up, we still have four. We have, like Carl said, five's optimal. So if we put, if Bonnie goes on with Julie, me, Nancy, Art.
I think you have more, because you have.
Nope. Art, Kim, Julie, Nancy, Bonnie, is what I'm reading.
Yep. Okay.
But you need to appoint a chair.
Yep. Bonnie, you want to be chair? You're chair.
Bonnie.
I think Bonnie didn't hear the question.
No, I don't think she did either.
Art? I was reading something.
Yep.
If I can be chair.
You're going to be chair of the finance?
Uh, not particularly.
Now, can the chair be a chair of Finance, or no? So you can still remain chair?
If the chair's crazy enough to want to be chair of Finance.
Does the chair still want to be Finance?
Does the chair want to be?
I'll be chair of Finance, yeah.
Do they need a co-chair? Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
And is the ad hoc going to be the same people? I think it should be.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Because it's subcommittee, right? I guess.
Or you take a smaller number of, you can take a smaller number of.
Okay. Uh, Community Relations.
Currently?
Yep.
Nancy is the chair. We had Sarah Pollak, Kim, and Bonnie.
I'm going to drop off that one.
I'd be happy to be added to that one.
I'd be happy to be added to that one as well.
I would love to stay chair if I can.
Yeah.
And we actually, we will need to meet fairly soon, briefly, anyway, just to see how we can, regarding rural schooling.
That's four.
Bonnie was on.
Bonnie's on. That's four.
That's four, Nancy, Bonnie, Miguel, Stephanie.
Oh, you wanted off, sorry, Kim.
Yeah, I'm off, because I picked up another one. So.
Oh, we only had three before.
Yeah, but it was, there's, especially when it comes to doing the newsletter, we need more. We constantly have more, the newsletter really is.
Because like, when I was on it, I, when my busy season hit at work, I couldn't write. I mean, there was nothing I could do, so. I, like, the first newsletter, I was great.
It's not a huge amount of time, but when, when listeners have to get down to that, it's kind of.
Deadlines, yeah.
Okay, Nancy, you can.
Sounds like there's four of us, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nancy, you're chair.
Sounds good.
And if anybody else wants to join after you think about this, let me know. It'd be better if we had five, but we'll take what we got. Okay, Policy Subcommittee.
Carl was the chair. We had Art, Kyle, and David also.
Carl, Kyle.
And you need somebody else?
So there are three.
Jim, you need to be on some. You need to be on some.
We need one more for our policy.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
You can add me to that one. You need one more. Stephanie, Stephanie's in the place.
I would switch off of Finance and go to that.
To Policy, it would be good to have you there. Can I ask you a question? That's related to the Policy Subcommittee? Has there been a recent communication with Liz?
Yes.
Come on, fine.
Yes, yeah.
We can flip.
Yeah.
And are we expecting that reasonably soon?
Well, we better, because there's a contract involved.
Right, okay.
Yeah, too many, you don't want.
So it was already voted, so once the contract is, once they present us with the contract, we just sign it and go. It's already been voted by this.
It hasn't been voted?
We have not, it has been voted, but we haven't seen the.
Right, and I asked her to review with me what is exactly in that contract, because I want to give it to you.
Art, I think Bonnie and Stephanie are flipping. Stephanie's going to Finance, and Bonnie's going to go to Policy.
Bonnie, you said you'd rather be on Policy than Finance. Okay, I'll switch, I'll switch spots. Okay, great.
So we have Kyle, Art, and Bonnie on the Policy Subcommittee.
Yep. I'm currently your real chair.
I'll join the Policy Subcommittee as well.
Okay.
Miguel's going. That's good, and I'm glad that you're doing that, because we are going to have what looks like a very busy year. Practically rewriting.
Sounds awesome.
Send it to a really great lady in the district.
That's what I figure, so.
Which one is he going on? Now he went on.
Policy.
All right.
Community and Policy.
I don't know how we missed that, okay? It just happened. Okay.
Personnel and negotiations.
Uh, Bonnie was chair, and we had Jim, Carl, and Bob Kilmer.
Bob Kilmer.
Yes.
Just for anyone who doesn't know, you are required to have one community elected official, and the five communities pick someone. So the last one was from Ullbrow, and the current one is from Sheffield, well, really, Ashley Fowles.
So will it be Bob Kilmer again?
Yes.
Okay.
His term is not up there.
Who's the current?
Bob Kilmer.
I would like to go on that one, personnel and negotiations.
I'll stay, I'll stay on that too.
Sure, I'll, I'll go on.
And Kyle.
Yeah.
My other-
Yes.
My other committee superintendent, superintendent, Sebel, I'll stay on that one.
I haven't got there yet, don't rush.
So Bonnie, are you staying on that?
Well, I think you have a full-
Third day, you could have four.
We all have, who do we have?
We have Kyle and- Three subcommittee members right now.
You can have four.
Kim, Jim, Kyle. And Bob Kilmer.
And did you want to be on there too?
He said that, she said that.
Oh.
Somebody said that.
I have Kim, Kyle, Jim, Bob Kilmer. Right.
And you.
And you.
That's, I got five.
Unless you're bailing on it.
Or Carl wants to continue.
Carl wasn't on it, was he?
I didn't think I was, but I, I-
According to my sheet.
Well.
I mean, that's the one that got changed, right?
That was another, yeah, finance. So I think there should be at least one more of you.
I mean, I'll, I'll go on it.
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
No.
I, well.
Carl?
I would say maybe some of, you or Carl because more experience and stuff like that.
I'm, 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 I'm happy to do it. Happy may be too strong. I'll do it.
And I would do it as well, so if there's any problem.
That's actually not a bad, to have that many, isn't it?
So Kim, Bonnie, Jim, Carl, Kyle, and Bob.
I think it's fine, honestly. I think it's fine to have that many on a negotiating here.
Well, I would also think, if anything, you know, I'm just, not selfishly, I would have said it no matter what. The amount of time personnel and negotiations is going to take. I think that people should be relieved of another major committee. Because this is going to be meeting like every two weeks and they're gonna be long sessions.
We'll make them very easy.
We need a chair.
So there's five together.
Who was the chair, Michelle?
Bonnie was the chair.
Bonnie, do you want to still be chair?
Well, Art, how do you, you know, feel about that?
Yep, it's fine.
In which case I should be taken off of one of the others when you've got plenty of people.
You don't have that many, the other one that you're on?
No.
You're only on community?
You know, policy.
Oh, no, you're on policy, yes.
Two big ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they happen at the same time. Will we be going through policy restructure at the same time the community happens?
And community relations are doing the news, but now that we have, maybe I can get off of that because Stephanie, you have a lot of experience in community, you know, writing and communicating. And Miguel, that's also your field, so maybe with that strength, I could, you know, pull that up in here.
I think I'll be okay, Bonnie, and we'll just go.
Do you feel comfortable with that, guys? Miguel?
Sure.
Seventy, yeah.
But just because you're on the committee, doesn't mean you can't write articles, right?
Yeah, anyone's gonna write articles.
I mean, that's what your forte is anyways, is writing the article.
They don't, like, I'm just saying, it's a lot of work. This committee is a lot of work, so I would appreciate bodies on it. Because I think, um, you know, I, I mean, it's one thing if you're saying you're on the committee and you're actively participating. It's great to reach out, but I, you know, I can't ask her to do all, everything, but I think you need more bodies on that. Because otherwise I'm doing up writing.
Yeah, I know, that's what winds up, and I wind up writing too many. Then I'll get off of policy. I mean, this is like every-
So Stephanie, are you going on community relations?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Stephanie's on.
Yeah, I'm happy to be on that one, no problem.
And Bonnie, you're staying, correct?
Well, we're trying to find one or the other to relieve her from, it was either policy or community relations. And it sounded more like you were interested in coming off of community relations than policy. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's how I heard it.
You're, you're, you're reading me. It's just, I really can't be, you know, obligated to, and this is gonna be a major obligation being on negotiations and policy.
Well, I can step forward for one of these. I just, I just don't know which one. I mean, I would take your place on one.
I think you'd be really great on policy. You've dealt with it in so many different areas.
Okay.
Rather than, and other, you've been exposed to it, you know, in so many ways.
Okay, so you want to get off policy? Yeah?
No, 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 I'm thinking-
Okay, I'll, I'll replace you on policy. Yeah, that's okay.
Thanks.
Because I don't feel like my strength is writing. I write, but I don't feel like it's my strength. That's all I can say.
What's that?
I bought a pencil this evening. So Bonnie's- I know who'll get it. On the community relations.
You knew you were gonna have it.
And then Julie will replace her on policy.
Policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, Bonnie, you are staying on community relations?
I'll stay on.
Just put her back on, I'm like, I need to write. And you're gonna chair, and you're gonna chair negotiations, right?
Yep.
And you're off of policy, but you are gonna be the chair of personnel and negotiations?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. We have Kim as the chair, Sarah, Bonnie, and Jim.
I'll stay on that.
Jim? Kim?
Well. I definitely want to stay on finance and building and grounds. Because if I remember correctly, we have about five meetings, correct? Between budget and things like that.
Yeah, it depends on the year, but there's, there's at least five series.
Which isn't that bad. And we have about five meetings on the other one. So I think I'll stay.
I'm still a chair of the evaluation.
And stay as chair. So, I might live here, so I might as well stay as warrant too because I'll be here all the time.
Everybody's your backup anyway.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So like, if I'm on finance committee and I can't make it, there's enough other people to cover for me because I'm not chairing anything.
But I think it would be really good, especially with some of the new people, if you would take somebody in to go through the whole warrant procedure.
That's fine.
So that you know.
I mean, if I have to drop that, that's fine with me too.
No, 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 I'm not saying drop, but let's say you, you've got every, the only way to get you on the, at a meeting is
Right.
to give up, you know, the warrants, and it's also because people need to know what backup they're allowed to look for in order to be, um, to sign off on a warrant. It is a responsibility.
Yep. Could also do that in the retreat so that everybody is aware of what they're looking for, you know.
Yep.
Bonnie, are you staying on the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee?
No, they're not just getting along with that.
Yeah.
Did you go off of that one?
So Miguel or Julie or Stephanie, somebody else has to be on this.
So far, me and Jim. Miguel?
Yeah, I'll join that.
Miguel?
I want one more.
Yeah.
Anybody, anybody? Okay. Okay.
Is Julie? So Kim, you'll still be the chair?
Yeah, I'll still be the chair.
Buildings and grounds is now an ad hoc.
Right.
Ad hoc curriculum subcommittee. Uh, we had Bonnie as the chair. We had Nancy and David. I'm sorry?
Which was this?
This was the ad hoc curriculum subcommittee.
Oh, yeah, I would love to stay on that.
How often does that meet?
Rarely.
Rarely. Okay, I'll go on that one.
It's, it's a form of ad.
And it's not because it doesn't, it's because I'm actually interested in curriculum.
Yes.
Julie just gives us-
Yeah, we're, we are a bunch of curriculum geeks, there's no question about it, it happens.
Okay. All right.
And I would stay on that.
Are you chairing?
Jim, are you staying on that?
I'm not on curriculum.
Oh.
I'm the superintendent of evaluation.
Right, right. No, but I think Bonnie, you were listed as the chair, right?
Right.
I think, yeah, you were staying as the chair.
Do you want to stay as chair or pass that on?
jointly.
Yeah.
Is Jim staying on that?
No, Jim is not on it.
Oh, I was gonna say.
I can't, I can't stay.
Jim, you're just everywhere. Bonnie, Nancy, Julie, Bonnie's chair.
Bonnie, would you like to stay on as a chair?
I'll, I'll stay on because all it is is coordinating with Julie, you know, being able to come up with a joint venture.
Okay, so then we have the MASC liaison subcommittee, and that was Carl.
Yeah, it was not a subcommittee. We have one person who was appointed as the delegate.
Just take subcommittee off and say liaison.
Yeah.
Right, it's actually the delegate and liaison and delegate.
Carl, would you like to stay on that? Yeah, I, I will. Uh, does, does that mean, what, what Bonnie just said about this, is this not properly a subcommittee? But it's just, I mean, would it be?
It's required by MASC.
No, I know that, but, but would it, but is it a subcommittee?
No, no.
So what, eliminate the word subcommittee?
That's what I just said.
Just find a, and delegate.
Okay.
Ad hoc for executive minute review committee.
That was Carl also.
Yeah, Carl was the chair, and I have Art and Bonnie.
Art, would you like to stay on?
Yeah, I'll-
Uh, so when we have an executive meeting, eventually they have to catch up the minutes to the executive meeting and then bring them forth and review them.
Well, we, we have not, we meet infrequently because, uh, there, we, we are catching up very slowly. But we think in the twenty-second century, we may catch up entirely. But there's, but along the way, you'll get a lot of time to rest.
Sounds like my kind of committee.
So, but it would be good to, to have anybody else on it. You, you're welcome to be on it. I mean, I don't know if you thought of it.
What's the name of the committee?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc for executive minute review. So basically you review the executive meeting minutes and decide if they're okay and if you want to release them.
To the public.
And there are specific guidelines that you must follow as long as it's determined.
So right now we have Art, Jim, Carl, would you like to stay on?
Yeah.
Bonnie, would you like to stay on?
I don't know. I don't really, it'd be good for someone else to get used to it.
Well, it's Carl, Art, and Jim, right?
Yeah, we got three.
Yeah, is that good?
Jimmy, you, you-
Well, you just put them on.
You just, you just got put on.
No, he said he'd do it. He's, he's my kind of committee.
Carl, would you like to continue to be the chair?
Yes, yeah, okay.
The ad hoc for the SBRSD representatives to the regional school district planning board?
Gone.
Oh, gone.
So we're eliminating that. Do you have to vote? Does somebody have to make a motion and vote on it or no?
It doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. Ad hoc for regional agreement review committee is currently, Bonnie is the chair. We have Carl, Kyle, and David.
Pronounce your rule.
I'll take that.
Where is it?
Kyle, I have to say.
Julie?
Julie?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Bonnie, are you staying?
Bonnie, you want to stay on that one?
Um, I think only through the history of it.
Perfect.
So who is it?
Kyle, Julie, and Bonnie. Um, Carl, would you like to stay on that?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, that would be good.
Who, I'm sorry, Bonnie, what did you say?
I said that would be good because you have somebody else who wants to stay.
Does anybody else want to join this subcommittee ad hoc? Um, who would like to be chair? Bonnie, would you like to continue to be chair?
Yeah.
No.
Julie, you can be chair.
I can be chair of it?
Julie's chair.
Yeah.
All right.
First name.
Yeah, I know, that's-
No bigger role, right, yeah.
We have the warrant representative is currently Kim.
Oh, I can stay.
Okay.
And then I will have somebody-
Everybody's a backup.
Okay.
As a backup.
Everybody.
Uh, the liaison to the Eagle Fund, is that being eliminated?
Done, gone, yeah.
Gone.
Liaison to the Southern Berkshire Childcare Program. I have Bonnie as the liaison currently, and that is gonna stay?
I can do that.
Okay.
Such a good liaison. Eagle Fund, I haven't won a liaison anymore.
Right. You really elected Kyle. You really nailed that one, Mike.
So you kind of sit in the room by yourself.
The liaison to early childhood committee is currently Nancy.
She's the same.
She's the same, yeah.
Nancy.
And lastly, we have the liaison to community health advisory team, and that's currently Kim.
I'm gonna take that one. Would you like that one? I haven't done anything in two years, but maybe you can. It sounds like in Jim's board, my kind of committee.
There you go.
Trust me, it is.
Just a Pat Levine comes and wants us to work, we're there.
I have a question.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, two thirds. At a relatively recent meeting.
We added a subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, urged on by a member of the community, Marie Kamen's.
Handbook, it's not viable.
The, uh, the handbook, she suggested and the committee considered and agreed to have a student handbook review subcommittee. And it's, that motion was passed, right?
Correct.
And, and, uh, I agreed to be, and several other people, right? But we don't have that subcommittee yet, and I think we should formalize it rather than have it be a talk. So can we do that?
Should we make it an ad hoc or a full-fledged?
Probably be an ad hoc.
Yeah, it makes more sense to be an ad hoc, I think, because it's, it has a specific time and a duration. Do we need a motion? We made a motion.
We made a motion.
The motion was accepted.
So, who was on that stuff, on that ad hoc? We have Carl, Kim, Bonnie. Art and Stephanie, and Jim, I thought you were.
What's the subcommittee?
The handbook.
The handbook?
Reviewing and going on.
I'll be on it if you want. I don't remember being on the-
So we have Carl, Kim, Bonnie, Jim. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll join that one.
Miguel?
Okay, Miguel.
But do you have any purview there?
I'm saying it's not a, I, I'd take exception to the formation of it, but.
Yeah.
I think the first thing we'll have to deal with is whether we should exist.
But I-
Okay. Well, who should exist?
That committee, what your purview is, the school committee versus.
Well, don't we have to sign off on it?
No.
Every year?
No.
We go through it and we agree and-
The approval and studies we sign off on, right?
We sign off on the handbook too.
Yeah, oh, you, on one of them, the employee.
On one of them, we said on the teacher one.
Not on this one. We show it, we share it with you, but it's not, it does not require a school committee approval.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up, I think the first topic should be whether it exists or not.
I would appreciate after you go through all of this, Art, to check, you know, for equity
on all these and, you know, if, if we have everybody involved. Art, can I make a comment on one of the things that Seth just said about not, not being required? That is, presumably that means that the handbook is not subject in any way to our approval.
Correct.
Correct.
Is that a matter of law?
Yes.
You don't know what the law of this...
I don't know what it is, but I can get it.
Okay.
But then we don't need that Subcommittee.
Well, here's the problem with not needing a Subcommittee. It's very possible, I mean, if I were in Marie Kamen's position...
You can't...
What?
You can't use the name.
You can't use the name.
Well, if I were a member of the community who suggested that a school committee Subcommittee or some action by the school committee and we agreed to it in my presence when I was making a public comment and then we reversed that, I would want to know why.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I think it should be our first topic of conversation at our meeting. In other words, to look at the purview and whether we actually have...
Okay, that all makes sense.
It may be a one-and-done Subcommittee.
That's what we're saying.
But we need our due diligence to create it because we said we could...
Okay, and we've created that.
And who would like to be the Chair of this Subcommittee?
Who signed it again?
We have Carl, Kim, Bonnie, Jim, and Miguel.
I am loaded on Subcommittee.
I would like to be on that because I would just like to see how that gets resolved because we did vote to approve those.
Yes.
And so I'd love to get that cleaned up in the same meeting if we can. If that's not something that we are supposed to be reviewing, that was a big waste.
So you're saying you're on the committee.
We share it anyway, but I'm just saying it's not a requirement by law that you do that.
For us to vote in.
Correct. We always share it with the committee.
Time saver and future...
Hundred percent.
But the law doesn't say it's not within our purview.
It does.
It does say that school committee has no say over a handbook.
You have. It says specifically which handbook you do approve and that is the Personnel one. It is not the student handbook.
So can we discuss this in a smaller group?
Correct. Okay, that's, I just wanted to know.
However, I have, we have always shared it with the committee.
I'm not saying that. I just, I was unfamiliar with any law that says a school committee doesn't approve a student handbook.
There's actual documentation.
I didn't need for us to discuss it. For it to be like the first agenda.
So are you Chair of that?
I, you don't want to be Chair, but I'll have to be.
It might just be one.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
Oh, Carl's the Chair.
Carl was. Okay, I will, but may have only one meeting.
Do you have a legal background?
Yes.
Can you put me on the Ad-Hoc Regional Agreement?
Sure.
Because you need to look. There's some things that need to be fixed on that.
So what I'll do is I'll put this new spreadsheet together and I'll generate it to everyone for your final review before I put it in. Just to make sure you still want to be on that committee.
Thank you.
And if there's others that want to join.
But I think Art and Israel as Chair should review it in terms like technically with a sign and...
Yeah. Help me in a little bit.
Yeah, I have a motion. The Policy BDE, please avoid the David Buber Edwards, requires, I think, the... The approval by the full committee of the Chair's selection of Chair people for the Subcommittee and its members. And we haven't done that. So I move that for all the preceding Subcommittees, whether full or ad hoc or liaison, that the school committee approve the selections that we've just gone through the last half hour or so.
Okay, roll call vote. Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And me, Art? Yes. Okay, the future agenda items are there. Does anybody have any other that they want to put on? This time. Things, go ahead.
I was just going to say it's a pretty packed agenda for a Subcommittee.
Yeah, I know. Do we have executive session?
Yes.
Can somebody read that motion?
I will. I move that the committee enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the superintendent of the district or contract negotiations with the superintendent and not return to open session.
Second. We need to do a roll call.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy? Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And me, yes. Now we need to...
Yeah, recording stopped.
To adjourn.
We need to adjourn.
Oh, yeah. I move, move. Some move to adjourn.
Hi, second.
I moved to adjourn. I asked the class, democracy and patience.
Yep, roll call vote again.
Yeah, not adjourn, open session.
Yeah, you did it. Carl did it. Yeah, it was all set. I was going to say.
Carl?
No, we're okay.
We did.
We did.
Okay, yes. Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
I agree.